Welcome, everybody. Dr. Easton, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Yes. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support in this meeting. Bless each Training Valley Board of Trustees with the discernment, the compassion as they carry out their duties. Lord, now, keep each member safe and continue to guide the trustees to do your will as we continue to work for the betterment of our college. Continue to guide all of us as we continue to do your work. Lord, now, we ask these things in your name. If people say amen.
Amen.
Thank you. At this time, if anyone signed up to speak, please take the podium. Seeing none, Dr. Morrison.
Item number three, swearing our new board member here.
Say your name or I'll say mine. All right, Daniel.
I know, Karen.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will faithfully execute the duties
That I will faithfully execute the duties
of the Office of Trustee District Three
The Office of Trustee District Three
of the State of Texas of the State of Texas and will to the best of my ability will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state and of this state. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
Dr. Morrison, President's Report.
All right, just kind of reminder, Board of Trustees, Christmas on John Beamer's December sixth from eleven thirty to one in the sub. Graduation will be here before we know it, December thirteenth at ten a.m. at Athens High School Gymnasium. Morgan will be sending an email out next Monday to see who wants to participate in the board. And before we get to Marcus, I wanted to give a share some news, some exciting things happened since the last board meeting. Our first one deals with our ADN program, our two-year warranty program. The 2024 spring class is setting at a ninety-three point forty-four percent pass rate. So congratulations Jason Smith and what they're doing up there. And then on our nursing, our vocational nursing program in Palestine, the summer class of twenty twenty-four is setting at a hundred percent pass rate. So great job there. Talk a little bit about our Fine Arts Program, our Cardinal Singers. We had two singers, Abigail and Eduardo are both moving forward as all-state choir members. So they'll be participating next February at the TMA Conference. So congratulations, Abigail and Eduardo. You know, we've been talking a lot about soccer. The postseason awards have been announced. We had two first team, Nancy Jacoba and Jenny, one midfielder and defender, and we had two second team with Ellie Pace and Dakota Barnes. So congratulations to those young ladies and the way that program has really changed over this year. Our theater just wrapped up their production of the Book Club play. And they are being considered by the Kennedy Center for American Colleges Theater Festival to participate in the Region Six Regional Festival. So it's a high honor to be selected among only five or six schools get selected. And so if selected, they'll get to perform at the regional conventions. Congratulations Craig Lee and those theater students. Did a great job. Volleyball season wrapped up over the weekend. We end up finishing eleventh at postseason play. But far as postseason honors, we had the Region fourteen freshman of the year in Sarah Dan Bono. And then the Region Center of the Year was Zoe Gunn. And then we also had, and they both of those made all first team conference and all region. Then Bea Benini made all conference, all region. Emma Bednack made all conference, all region. And Genesis Rodriguez was all conference, all region, honorable mention. At the next board meeting in January, because the words just came out today, we had a number of football players that will be receiving conference recognitions, and I will announce those in the January board meeting. Now I'm going to turn it over to Marcus to kind of give us an update on our Phase Capital One, Phase One projects.
Thank you. First want to thank the trustees and Dr. Morrison for your support and encouragement in this probably five-year capital improvement plan. We appreciate, I think everyone at the college appreciates your support for this initiative. Even though we're very early on with this plan, people can already see, walk across campus, you can see some of the projects underway, a couple of them even finishing up already, and you can see some excitement around campus. And so that's ultimately what we're going for is we want everyone, whether they're a student, especially the faculty, staff, and community to be, well, not be proud when they step on the campus to be a affiliate teams we see. So it's a brief update. Morgan has a spreadsheet up on the screen there. You can read the ones in front of you just more closely. Walk us through some of these. The Fine Arts Building, of course, Fine Arts and West Hall were the first projects that we started at the end of last spring, beginning of the summer. Fine Arts, we had interior and exterior work. Interior work included flooring, paint, ceiling tiles. We sheetrocked the entryway. And we're installing new doors on each end of the hallway. Those have yet to be installed, but we are very close to finishing up all that interior work. On the outside of the building, they waterproofed it, a brand-new roof, which they're almost done with. They'll be done next month. And you probably have noticed the cladding as well around that building. And so I think that project in particular has people excited to see the improvements that are coming. So that project is nearly completed. In West Hall, we did also an interior and exterior work there. Exterior was waterproofing work, and that has been completed, as well as South Hall waterproofing. Interior, we redid all flooring throughout, except for the bathrooms, and then painting, ceiling tiles, new lighting. We'll have new furniture coming in in just a few weeks here, next month. And so we're very excited about that. That was not, the new furniture was not part of the capital improvement plan. That was part of the operating budget. The Math Journalism Building, the waterproofing is complete there, and in a couple of weeks, they'll be starting the cladding work on that building as well. Then we have a couple of interior projects planned for that building. We're going to be doing some renovations to the lecture hall, as well as the police department in that building. Probably won't be done until lecture hall probably in the summer and the police department probably, probably January for that one. Fitness Center, we're relocating the main entry to the street side, which is the more appropriate entry for that, for that building. And of course, we've already started with putting a new roof on that building as well, and they should be done in the next couple of weeks there, Fitness Center. In South Hall, I mentioned the waterproofing has been completed, and then we'll need to wait until the summer to do interior renovations. So we're planning on doing similar work to what we did in West Hall, but we're also planning on renovating the bathrooms as well over at the South Hall. Cardinal Gym, you may have noticed the roofing materials up there on the lower part of the roof. Within our roofing plan, we separated the lower portion from the upper portion of Cardinal Gym roof. So this year is the lower portion. They are nearly done with those, putting on that new roof. And thanks in large part to a gift from the TVCC Foundation, each of the locker rooms received various, varying degrees of renovations and new lockers, different ways basketball and volleyball in the gym as well. So that's very exciting. And as you may recall, at the last board meeting, the welding building, we had electrical issues. We have to do major electrical repairs. We're about seventy-five percent done with that, thankful to report, and they should be done hopefully later, I plan to December for that electrical work. Northwest Dorm, in the next couple of days, the roof group will begin putting a new roof on Northwest Dorm. And so I was working with the roofers and our PD and coming up with a safety plan to make sure that there's a perimeter and block off appropriate parking, just as we do with any of these projects that affect the outside footprints of walkways and passive entry to buildings. And they expect that work to be done in December. Same goes for the Soccer Field House roof. That's a shingle roof, and they haven't begun, begun that yet, and that'll go quickly when they start next month, and they do expect to finish that roof as well, all of the roofs in December. There are a few grounds projects on the Athens campus that we have going right now and about to begin during the break. The area, just the area between Liberal Arts and Math Journalism, so just south of Liberal Arts, just north of Math Journalism, there's a sidewalk. You may have noticed if you walk there, you have to, hopefully not at night, you have to walk carefully in order to avoid the separation in the sidewalk due to the tree roots. We have some beautiful trees, but they have, what trees do, there's the large live oaks, and they have lifted portions of the sidewalk and they penetrated a portion of the Liberal Arts building. We had to remove a tree there. We had to remove shrubbery. They removed the sidewalks, and it was fascinating to see they use an air spade to clear out the roots, and they cut those roots where they're going to then come back and pour sidewalks, and we're going to make the sidewalks a little wider and redo the western entry to Liberal Arts as well. So it's not such a steep slope, so it'll be giving a compliant or wheelchair access into that building, on that side of the building. We're also replacing the gas line over there. We realized the crew hit the gas line a couple of times. It was about six inches deep, which is too shallow for a gas line. And as they uncovered it, they realized repairs had been done to that line several times in the past. So we made the call to remove it completely, put in a new line and vary it with appropriate gap rates. Also, during the break, we, the Christmas break, we have drainage work and sidewalk replacement planned around Fine Arts Building. They recall in the pathway leading to the band hall, there would be a little puddle or pond even, depending on how much rainfall we would receive. It just didn't drain properly. So we're going to fix that and then force a new side room there as well. So that will all be done, Lord willing, before students can turn to campus. And then also, for the exterior of our, of our campus here in Athens, we are refurbishing our monument site up front of campus, and that work is underway. We do have to go through the city for that, and so that may drag out until maybe February or so, but we're very excited for once that project is finished and, you know, the board is working together to do the work. Looking forward to that. Also, Liberal Arts, we're planning on replacing gutters and downspouts, softens and baseia there. Previously, the materials were residential grade, so we're coming back with commercial-grade materials that will be much more durable. So really, that whole area there between Math Journalism and Liberal Arts gutters and downspouts of Liberal Arts should be much more pleasant through there. We're planning on, well, many of you may not know, behind the transportation buildings, the building services and transportation departments are together on Brazil of the hill in one building. Behind transportation, we have a storage building. And our transportation and logistics team has made a commitment to purge the surplus that are building all around Athens and our other campuses. And we're going to limit our storage to that storage building. So efforts are underway in doing that, but in order to use that as a functional storage building at the sports storage building, we need forklift access there, so we're going to pour concrete to connecting those two, those two buildings. For us, we also have a, on the Athens campus, Prox Access, a project. It's the first phase. Basically, it's, the idea here is to to up the security in points of entry into buildings. And so we're still in the research and kind of scoping process of that one, but we expect we'll probably be able to have the first phase done in January of twenty twenty-five. Down in Palestine, in the summer, we'll be doing a renovation of the auditorium in the Anderson Building. Looking forward to that, that that orange auditorium building, if you've been down there, or rooms, if you've been down there. So that will go get a facelift. Of course, we've already finished renovations of the old ECRC building because TDCJ employees are now already office-ing there in that building. And so it's now going to be called the Bridge because the employees working there are, they, they work with the inmates who are taking classes. And so the idea is that this is a bridge from incarceration to their life. So that building is done, and then also we'll be doing some remodeling of three classrooms and two offices in the Calhoun Building. Down there at Palisian, that's also related to TDCJ coming on the campus. As you know, we got the new Training Academy is under construction, nearly completed sometime in December. And TDCJ will be moving out of the Palestine Mall and onto campus into that new three thousand square foot building. That. Up in Carroll, we have grounds work planned in the summer, but at the I-20 campus, we have some drainage issues and also some sidewalk trip hazard issues up there. And so that just last week, Tony Buford and I were meeting with the engineer and his team, walking around the campus, coming up with the scope and plan. So the engineer is going to draw the plans and together on that project. And of course, the Health Science Center up in Carroll, the post-storm work continues with the roof replacement. They've made, they've completed the tear-off. They installed base sheet. They should be done in the next few weeks. Hopefully, something similar. They plan to be completely done that project there. And as we have later on in the agenda, we are now turning our focus to the non-roof reconstruction, where most of it interior. Also, there's on the HVAC unit, the gas lines, some of the things. And so that will take us well into the spring for that work, and we expect by May to have the Carroll Health Science Center completely put back together after the roof, but that's all damage. We also have some roof repairs on the I-20 campus related to that storm. The key building, that will be happening later this month. And replacing lab flooring in that same key building in the I-20 campus, that's where roof leak happens. The damage we experienced on the I-20 campus was in that space. And so we've been working with our insurance and FEMA as well in assessing all those damages and working with them at each step of the way as far as what repairs are going to be made and preparing everything in kind. So we expect to receive payoffs to insurance and and then finally, just system-wide, we are in the process of a facility condition assessment. Alpha Facilities Group, they came on campus for several days. They, they visited each campus, each building on each campus, and they barcoded and took down the information and assessment on every every facility asset that we have in each building. So the way it was described to me, took the roof up the building, turned upside down and shook it. Everything still in that building would receive a barcode and be part of the scope of the facility condition assessment. It's important because that will then be imported into our new computerized maintenance management software, which we're in the process of of implementing right now. And so we'll be able to track the health of those facilities assets we pull in once we have that system. So even though we have all these projects going on, we are also working on modernizing and making our operations more efficient as well. And so again, we're so thankful for your support in all these projects, as well as your feedback and encouragement and exciting time to be at Training Valley. Questions?
Of course, a lot of these projects are going to be wrapping up towards the end of the year, some of the ones we had summer-related. But learning the lessons from the first round of Capital One projects, we will be coming to the board in January with Phase Two because many of the projects are summer tied to summer opportunities like the bathrooms in West, bathrooms in South, some welding, building upgrades and repairs. Re-stemming the building, that building, some other projects. So we'll be bringing to the board in January round two. And you know, this is kind of, if you get a chance tonight, I want to thank Marcus and his crew. If you get a chance tonight, take a loop around campus and just notice how well-lit it is. We have been, they have been working tirelessly over the last few weeks to ensure every light we have is working for the safety of our students and just the appearance of our campus. And I think we're ninety-eight percent there. I think we got a couple that's given us fits, but it's, it's really coming together. The tree, trees have been trimmed, being trimmed over the last couple of days. Just opening things up. So campus is coming back to life, and so we're very proud of that, and we look forward to Phase Two, which will, like I said, will dress roofs and other options, and I'll bring that to the board. I just want to remind the board, the next board meeting will be January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five. So that's my report, sir.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Consider the Minutes of October twenty-eighth. If you sent a copy, there's one in front of you. Hope you, you're going to have a chance to read that. Do I hear motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
This may feel minute, and then second by Mr. Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
All against, say, same side? Motion carried. Consider Business and Financial Investment Reports for September twenty twenty-four. Mr. Hopkins.
Sir, just real briefly, first month of the fiscal year. Our tuition fee revenue is up. I did want to point out that I think that that's not going to be twice eleven percent once all the fast levers between the two years get settled down, especially last year, that program was good. But I think it's going to be more in the three to four percent range. But I did want to point out that doesn't include probably over a million dollars that the state will send us as tuition reimbursement, but we weren't even able to send our list in to the coordinator until October or fall. So we'll do a reconciliation. This program just seems to run a couple of months behind with coordinator. We don't, we don't have any property taxes to speak of at this point, of the penalties and interest. Those taxes, as y'all will level, are assessed October first. We'll talk about that a little bit later in the agenda. I'll draw your attention to state appropriations in October. As we talked about, state will go to a free phase, so in October, we get basically half for allocation, as you see, six point three eight dollars there. The rest expenses are there for you. Nothing really that unusual, all things in the budget. The revenue over expense for this September was one point eight billion, six two three. Last September, one point eight nine zero, very similar end result. I want to go down to, it's going to have a couple of pages more into the investment report. Yeah. We're still doing pretty good on interest rates. So cap reserve is still at thirty-one million. We have quite a bit of money right now in money market because we've got all these projects going on and other expenses coming up, so we make sure we have the cash flow to meet in the next couple of months. And one thing I did want to point out, I talked about this and property taxes. Most people don't realize that from mid-December through probably mid-February, forty-six percent of our revenue is when forty-six percent of it comes in. Property taxes, if you look at those numbers, in that window, that's, that's almost half of our budget comes in in that period of time. And so I just think that's something that, you know, most people don't think about. Next page, talking about cap reserves. We didn't have much coming out this month. We have a lot in August as far as invoice dates. Jeffreys has given you the reconciliation there. The last page has a whole bunch of checks on it to give everybody a chance to see if you have any questions. You can see there, like the FW Walton, we had several of the roofs. That was October invoice we paid in September. And lots, several other projects, as Marcus mentioned, that are going on there. See if anybody had any questions, but a lot of work going on. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Hopkins? Do you hear a motion to approve the Business and Financial Investment Report? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Consider and Discuss Two Thousand Twenty Four Adblock Tax Rule Levy as presented.
Okay, every year, Lord, as you probably know, the state law requires y'all to approve the tax roll levy. There you can see the total is twenty-nine, three twenty-eight, two two five. At the taxing officer assess October first-ish, some of them running a little later or have recently. The good thing I did want to point out is that this levy compared to our budget is four hundred, close to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars higher. And the reason, it's not normally that much of a difference, but the reason is this year when Henderson County certified to us in July, they had seven hundred and ninety million dollars worth of property that was still under protest. And their advice was only count half of that in your budget and your truth in taxation, which we did. So this would indicate to me that they did much better than anticipated. But again, conservative budgeting, and that's what we were advised to do. But I did want to point out that this is higher than what we budgeted. But we're just asking that y'all approve the resolution to acknowledge the levy.
Any questions? Hearing none, we're here a motion to approve. Dr. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion carried. Okay, consider, discuss the contingency fund budget adjustments.
All right, you remember back a couple months ago, we had the transcripting project that kind of, we started and we're trying to finish up the year before, wasn't able to finish up, and so we had to carry it over to this year, and we had to take some money out of contingency to do that because what was budgeted already went to reserve. But it's kind of the same thing here. Our auditorium and board equipment update, it's hoping to be done prior to the end of last year's budget was not, so it kind of crossed over in this year. So the money that was originally allocated is being moved to reserves. So we're asking So we're asking to spend eleven thousand and two hundred and seventy-one dollars out of our current contingency fund, just seeking board approval.
Any comments or questions? Hear a motion to approve that action? Dr. Easton?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, consider and discuss bids for the Terrell Health Science Center post-storm reconstruction work.
As Marco was stating earlier, we're getting ready to start the interior repair. We had two vendors to submit bids. You can see the two bids in front of you. It is a recommendation of Marcus and his staff that we go with Wilson Recon DRT LLC. So I just need recommendation and approval from the board.
Any questions or comments? Do we hear a motion to approve? Motion made, second to Dr. Easton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, business, consider and discuss personnel updates.
Before you have personnel updates, they consist of resignation, termination, retirements, new cars, reclassification, adjustment, promotions, just seeking board approval.
Do we hear motions approved? Motion made, there a second. But Dr. Curran, wait a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. Item number eleven, discuss and consider ending into, entering into a settlement agreement with the Department of Education related to its program review and funding of same from the capital reserves. Y'all have before you, and were sent earlier this week, the settlement agreement that has been brought to us by the DOE and also has been vetted by our attorney, Lee Porter. And when I open it up for any discussion, not, we'll just, well, is there any discussion or comments? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second, wait a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. Dr. Charlie?
No closed session, you mean?
No closed session.
Thank the motion we are doing.
All right, second by trustee Day. All in favor, say aye. Thank you all, and thank you all for being here.